Okay, I'd like to call the June 21st, 2021 meeting of the City Council of Lake City to order. If everyone will stand for the pledge of allegiance to remain standing for the invitation to begin by Councilmember Jake Hill.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Then, Father, thank you for allowing us to see this day, Father. And, Father, we ask that you be in balance and listen to the way that you have to go, Father. Now, Father, I actually just give this council and decision that we make, and I am here to your side. Please say a prayer.
Father, I want to just speak this out here.
As I should be talking about.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Jefferson?
Here.
Mr. Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Witt?
Yeah.
Mr. Helfenberger?
Here.
Chief Gilmore?
Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened its public meetings since 1968. The city code has prohibited any person from making personal and pertinent or slanderous comments or becoming boisterous while addressing the city council. Yelling or making audible comments from the audience constitutes boisterous conduct. Such conduct would not be tolerated. There is only one approval manner of addressing the city council. That is to be recognized and that speaks for the party. We don't have any pro forma motions under minutes. We have minutes for the session, June 7th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes from June 7th, 2021. Sir.
And a motion on second. I want to pay the sound.
Aye.
Okay, next is approval of the agenda. And as my understanding, Mr. Sampson wants to add on to manager evaluation. And I think we'll take that up at between nine and four and five. With that amendment, the motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a way we could do it before item? Before the financial report, that's gonna be long. It won't be long.
Mr. Mayor, I know not all of us, you know, you've postponed the meeting for hours. After midnight, I think it's been hours.
Thank you.
When you sit there, you put it to the top of your chest.
I think it is.
Yeah. At four, five, we're four times.
We're just going to take it. Thank you.
I think we actually take a period of time.
Okay, we'll put it ahead of the presentation. That'll be fine. But that amendment, the motion to approve the agenda.
Motion, sir.
Okay, as I should be talking about.
Mayor, is that going to be a word just out of?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
No.
Mayor Witt?
Yeah. Approval of the consent agenda, the motion to approve the consent agenda. Sir. The motion on second to approve the consent agenda, I want to pay the sound.
Aye.
Okay. At this time. Well, are you wanting to do it before people speak? That's why I was trying to get it passed there, so people could speak before we're doing it.
I'm fine either way. Whichever way, I mean, I think. I'm fine now, I was fine at five, I was fine last week when we tried to schedule it, couldn't get a consensus, so I'm fine. However, we want to.
I think.
I think people should have a right to speak. Can we move that before this and then still keep the presentation after?
Right.
Let's do that.
Okay, and everybody did, we have a lot of people here and we've got a lot to do. Everybody could obey the three-minute rule as best you can. I keep hearing comments everywhere, okay, that we're not doing that, so if you please try to do it. Sylvester Moore.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. I'll be brief. I think that myself and most of the people sitting behind me, you know, were up here for several reasons. We feel strongly that Ms. Amy Fields was treated wrongly in the way in which she was terminated. We're asking not only for the council to look at how Mr. Hefenberger, excuse me, Mr. Hefenberger treated that issue, but also the countless times that Mr. Hefenberger, that we've witnessed him a lot to the council, performed at a very incompetent level. We lost confidence in him as a community, you see many people here. I would hope and think that the council at this point has lost confidence. I've talked to different several council members, and it seems to be, at least in my opinion, there's a sense that there is a loss of confidence in Mr. Hefenberger. And I just don't see how this many people have either resigned, have been terminated upon the Mr. Hefenberger. Was heartbreaking to me and most people that I know. And you'll see many directors, he said that she was not a good fit for the city. Many directors have spoken up on her behalf and said that she was a breath of fresh air, now she's boosted her rap. And so, the only person that I find not to be a good fit for the city is definitely not Amy Fields. It's definitely Mr. Hefenberger who is not a good fit for the city. And so, there's a lot of unethical things that Mr. Hefenberger has asked people that are part of the city workforce to do, that I'm aware of, asking IT directors to write things and say that the city is secure and safe, and trying to force them to do so to the point that they decide not to do so and resign. This got to stop. We were letting Mr. Hefenberger cause the city of Lake City to be a complete embarrassment and clownship. And at this point, we're asking the people that we voted for to put an end to the way that our city is being managed. And I pray to God tonight, though everybody may not, I pray to God tonight that we get rid of Mr. Hefenberger and we move this city forward because so far, he has not been answered as to what we need as far as management is concerned. He can't make a decision, flip flops all over the place. He'll tell you one thing, tell me something different. Go back and tell me the same thing and tell me something different. You cannot lead a city this size with this type of budget, this type of issue, with somebody like him in hand. And I think that everything that has happened leading up to Ms. Amy Fields, her just being a callous or either distraught, broke the camel back, that this has to stop. How much longer we gonna go on like this, Mayor? Council, how much longer can we continue to go on like this as a city and people take us seriously? Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa George? We're not, I mean, this is the time for public comment.
I'm not ready.
Okay. Z-Face for Coke?
Good evening, the April 636 Southeast Bay Avenue. I appreciate that the item was new. I really just want to bring the council's attention to section 3,4 of the charter. Prohibitions specifically. Interference with administration, except for the purpose of inquiries, investigations, the council or the management, or the employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the manager solely criminalizing. Neither the council nor its members shall give orders to any such officer or employee, either publicly or privately. Nothing in the court order is to be considered within any management of the council from closely scrutinizing by questions and personal observations, all aspects of city government operations, so as to obtain independent information with system members in formulation of sound policy to be considered public. It is the express intent of this charter, however, that recommendations or improvement in city government operations by individual council members be made to and through the city manager so that the manager may coordinate every, all city departments to achieve political savings through the most efficient and sound means available. I know it seems that being on the outside looking in gives you better view as to what the city manager, what he's feeling and how things are running. I trust the charter. I trust the charter, I trust the process that's in place. And quite frankly, whether or not I agree with all the decisions that the city makes, I trust the city manager. Not because I know him personally or believe that anybody has superpowers, but I believe in God and I sincerely believe that, given the opportunity, everything is going to work out. All this is gonna work out. We have a city manager being pulled in a lot of different directions. Every citizen that I have spoken to in Columbia County or in Lake City has the ability to pick up phone and call this manager and go speak, you know, about whatever issue. I haven't lost faith in the city's ability to do anything. I've lost faith in citizens' ability to be objective when they have demonstrated by their actions that they will sell drugs to our children.
What order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are we having personal attacks up here?
Away from my time to speak, having called out names. I can speak to citizens selling drugs without speaking of anyone in particular.
Okay, we're just continuing to leave that part out. And everybody is already playing.
The faith that is being lost is not in administration or specific council members, council as a whole. The faith, well, he took ten seconds of my time. The faith that's being lost is in the ability of citizens, which was never there in the first place, to run the city. We have elected officials, we have a charter, and together they work to govern us, not criminals. Thank you.
I'm gonna nail down.
Mr. Mayor, councilman about and he's on Fifth and Sixth, that's on large drive. I am disappointed, I mean, standing here tonight, that's just it. Two and a half years ago, when Mr. Hefenberger came on board, I had some confidence and felt a little bit tired about the city's gonna move forward. Over the past year and a half, however, I haven't seen anything just go down here. He has not proven to be a good hire of employee. Think about this. He had two city managers he had, HR president left, IT president left. And these people that he needed to have, so they were not a good fit. I mean, he's not making a good decision in his hiring process. And having served on the city council in the past, have known so many meetings. Yes, you are, you are positive makers, but when the citizens of the community lose confidence in the man, and we got a problem. It can be fifteen percent, thirty percent, fifty percent, you get it to that level. And we got a serious problem in the lack of confidence in the community. The, uh, he said that this portion, the evaluation and apostrophe, you know, I don't know how you're going to evaluate him tonight, but I can curb up Mr. Moore that the city should be some kind of way to decide to move to another city manager, another city manager. I support totally the city manager, though. We went from a strong male government to the city manager government, I was totally on board. I still support them. Government function, very important function about led by professionals. However, professionals conduct themselves in a way that calls people to be upset and mistrustful. And we got a problem. Nobody making this up. You know, employees talk, they talk to the family, the family don't talk, those of the community, when the word get out. I have never witnessed in this city, this has been a city manager, we're a city manager maker of decision. Three, at least three of his department, the member in support and opposition to his action. Now, that within itself has undermined his position to continue to be a big city manager. There is no way. There's three people willing to go on the ground, or when they put on a written form, let me just put it right. It's all over social media, so we know that this three, they got some concerns about Mr. Hefenberger leadership, Steve. Probably they got concerns about the mission still, that it makes sense to know that we gonna have it also. I'm not speaking for the community, I'm speaking for Clinton about it, who know that some people share my opinion. Now, there are people in this community that don't come to city council meeting and they call different people. I know, I know they call some other people, but there are also people calling saying that it's time for a change. Those people aren't gonna come up and say it, they gonna stay home. So, there's other folks that if you could hear it from my note, they're saying, hey, it's time for us to make a change. The county government have lost confidence in the city manager, not in the city of Lake City, but in the city manager. They have said so much, but it's really time for us to move this ball forward and move on, you know. And I ain't on this note. A good fit after two months, I don't understand how a person coming to work with the background that this fit have, and in too much time, the city manager decided she is not a good fit. That don't make sense to me. That mean that five of the people he hired over the past two years have not been a good fit. But same to me, the lack of a good fit, causing Mr. Hefenberger, you know. And I think it's time for us to replace him and bring in someone who can bring this city together and get us back on the right foot around now. This debate is not careful for this city.
Thank you. Ms. Julia May Page?
My name is Julia May Page, I stay on 740 North Aberdeen Avenue. The best one do not speak to me, and he is a big liar. He keeps up too much mess going on. And I know that for a fact.
My thought we said about the name calling her.
Yeah, yeah, wait, don't mention names, just talk to us about.
Cause she getting very disrespectful, and at this point, age ain't gonna matter again in a minute.
Okay. Ma'am, ma'am, address us and don't mention names and don't disparage anybody, we're gonna follow them.
Yeah, and he is a big liar.
What they wanna do with the, what they gotta do with the, uh, city manager? What they gotta do with while we?
Well, well, the city manager. So, Matt, uh, he is. He is a good man. And I want to. Everybody stop.
Okay, everybody know this, be quiet. Ma'am, do not make personal attacks, talk to us about what you want to do or what you're concerned about.
Well, you done a good job, he is really doing a good job. Why are you? Will you do?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, there.
Okay. Vanessa George, if you want to speak.
Vanessa George, 930 Northeast Yoconey, I am here to speak on what is on the agenda. Okay, first and foremost, a city manager does not go about bragging about not speaking to his citizens, blocking phone calls from citizens. I came up here last week and Mr. Hefenberger is bragging, oh, she came up here and I refused to see her, which I didn't know at the time because I hadn't leave. But that is not, that is very unbecoming of a city manager. Very unbecoming, blocking calls from citizens is very unbecoming of a city manager. And when we go to Ms. Fields, I want to know how many times she been written up? How many times has she been disciplined? For her not to be a good fit, it should be a paper trail or hook. And if it's not a paper trail, you just say one day, oh, listen, she's not a good fit. Where is the paper trail? Nine times out of ten, when people are not a good fit, you don't roll them up, spoke to them, you have a paper trail.
Okay. Sean Holbrooke?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak. I'm here to represent the over 10,000 people that aren't here tonight, who are probably very satisfied with Joe Hefenberger's service. I know him personally. I've interacted with members of his team and the city, and everybody that I've interacted with has been very professional and conducted themselves professionally. I think a lot of the people here have a sort of mob mentality when they come here and try to bring a group of people who are dissatisfied, who represent a very small percentage of the population, many of whom are, many of whom are at odds with the law enforcement or with the council and some of the actions that have been taken. So, I, I ask that you guys think about all the people who work and don't come out to these meetings and who are very satisfied with the performance when you take up such a serious matter as changing the direction of the city. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, everybody know this has to be quiet, or I'm gonna ask the law enforcement to take them back. Okay, and last one I have here is Amy Fields.
Mayor Witt? City Council, citizens of Lake City. I'm here tonight to request that the city council, as the city manager, to reconsider my request for reinstatement. I enjoy working for the citizens of this city and interacting with the staff. My longstanding experience, education, and vision, coupled with my integrity and hard work benefited all. I am enrolled in the Doctor of Business Administration program. I possess an MBA in HR management and a Bachelor of the Science in Human Services Management. I am a certified state of Florida class B CDL state tester and trainer and the owner of two businesses. In the two months and five days, April 5th through June 10th, as the Director of Human Resources of Lake City, I discovered certain policies and standard operating procedures the city did not have or needed to update. These policies and procedures included public records redaction, social media use, administrative leave and investigation, performance improvement, IT security and awareness, compensation for injury while on duty, first responders, and procurement. To enhance and improve these policies, I immediately began to research and compile data. When I found the city was vulnerable and policies needed revision, I brought this to the city manager Hefenberger's attention. When it was brought to my attention that several first responders were not fully compensated for injuries while on duty, I made necessary connections to ensure the proper process began. These cases are still in the pipeline. There are, there were also approximately ten workers' compensation cases I had inherited that needed serious attention as well. These two were lacking notice. Safety and risk management had never been implemented, another job I inherited. I advised the city safety and risk officer to develop a curriculum for training for the city. I presented the city manager my findings both in writing and verbally. The city manager was in total agreement with my findings. I also discovered during a conversation with the city manager, there were issues with his email. He told me he hadn't used his email for the three weeks, for three weeks because he knew information in his emails was being leaked by someone within the city. The city manager instructed me to research IT security and procurement and other current issues, including redacting public records. It is a responsibility and a duty of the Director of Human Resources to bring to the attention of the city manager valid complaints, compliance, liability, inadequate security, and other issues which concern the staff and human resources within the city. I believe how I was terminated was intentional by Mr. Hefenberger, and the city of Lake City have damaged my professional relationships, and this will cause me, will cause me economic harm in the future. I have been humiliated in front of my peers, major city directors, and suffer intentional affliction of emotional distress. The city manager's claim that I am not a good fit was privileged information, not true, and will follow me wherever I go in the future and will be an impediment to my career. In the city's notice of termination, city manager Hefenberger memorialized for all time that I am not a good fit. The city's statement is false and defamatory. It is not true, it lowers my reputation in the community and detours third persons from association with me. I believe the city manager retaliated against me because I revealed deficiencies within city practices and policies that are against the public's interest and the city's best interest. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to answer any questions, and again, ask you to encourage Mr. Hefenberger to reinstatement. I request this statement replaced in my personnel file and in the city, at the city of Lake City's Human Resource Department.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes the ones I have, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Sampson first.
Okay. I want to look at the performance of the city manager. Since Mr. Hefenberger's been here, he's hired two assistant city managers, an IT director and an HR director. They are all gone. One of the assistants was qualified in water and wastewater, the other had no experience in those fields. Both assistant city managers resigned or were forced to resign. IT director Mandy Rand was a qualified IT director, she was forced to resign. The most recent hire, HR director Amy Fields, while she didn't have recent government experience, has a wealth of business experience and an MBA. That didn't work out either. Before Ms. Fields was fired, the city's longtime city HR director resigned. Many people thought she was abandoning the ship. The interim director of IT quit after a few weeks. It was so disenchanted that he refused to speak with the city manager and forwarded his resignation directly to the city council. Over a month ago at a public meeting, the city manager was asked to provide a report regarding the issues surrounding the resignation of Mandy Rand. That report still has not been provided. Months ago, Councilman Green asked city manager Hefenberger to provide documentation and begin the process for his annual evaluation. Nothing was done. City manager Hefenberger has missed crucial meetings with the county in which the city was harmed by not, his not being in attendance. When the county called a meeting regarding the industrial park proposal, according to city attorney Cobra Line, both Mr. Cobra Line and Mr. Sweat were told not to attend. Mr. Cobra Line attended anyway, but was not authorized to speak for the city. This has majorly damaged our relationship with the county. In November 2020, during the city council meeting, the city manager, the assistant city manager, director of utilities, director of city water, could not explain why the city water use permit had been reduced. Although the city manager knew what the answer was, it was not presented. The Blanche has been problematic since its inception. In late 2020, the city had an opportunity to recapture some of the money it owed IDP due to what some thought was a breach of contract. The city manager never provided the written legal opinions and memos from attorneys which showed that the city had a very good chance to win a lawsuit against the Blanche. Currently, morale among the city workforce is at the lowest I have ever seen it, and I've lived in this city a long time. Recently, all but one of the primary city directors came out against the termination of HR director Amy Fields and asked the city manager to reconsider his decision. The city manager refused. The city manager's recent performance regarding access to the email server by the city clerk was another instance where the city manager showed he's incapable of making a decision and standing by it. This caused the latest city IT director to resign from his responsibilities over the IT department. It also caused a supervisor over the IT department to quit. The city manager never memorialized Mr. Dahl's management promotion in writing over the IT department, which is a bad management practice. I also understand there was a time, which we just heard about, when the city manager refused to check or use his email because he thought it was being hacked. This calls for an investigation and reason for the city manager on why he did not ask for one. It's clear that a forensic investigation, the email server, may have revealed the truth and substance of any email issues if they existed. These are just some of the issues in which city manager Joe Hefenberger's played a part. Lake City's in trouble because of ineffective management, and it is time that Lake City find another city manager who can lead us out of this deepening mess. It's time for us to make a hard decision, it's time for us to move forward, it's time for us to make a change and move in a direction that brings people together instead of tearing things apart. I've got a whole bunch of other examples I could bring forward. At this time, I'm not gonna be bringing them forward, but I would like to make a motion that we remove the city manager and put him on a 45-day suspension immediately, as is called for in the charter. Say for the motion.
Okay. Perfect, Mr. Hefenberger, he wanted to reply at this time, and then council will discuss the vote.
Okay, as far as the, uh, directors, uh, we had with the assistant city managers, it's, uh, with the fluid process, and you have to, you can't wait forever, you have to make decisions on what you have in front of you. The, uh, you know, I have the process going again, uh, but when it wasn't working out, you can't continue to keep that person. The IT director, the initial one, had been, uh, basically, uh, involved in, you know, not protecting the city adequately with the cyber attack. Mandy Rand, uh, she resigned, she quit on her own. I didn't, I never asked her to leave, in fact, I had two meetings with her prior to the, prior to her leaving that, you know, I was looking to work with her and just have Paul Dahl help to, uh, to get the flow of the workflow going because there had been. workflow going because there had been felt the need to kind of streamline that process. Ms. Fields, there were a number of things beyond what, what appears here. And I, I just think that you can't go ahead and, as far as the redactions, she had refused to do redactions. We, I went and got an attorney opinion which showed the conclusion was agreed to with Ms. Cobreline and then Ms. Fields said that she didn't agree to that. She was gonna quote seek her own legal opinion. With regard to the scheduling of meetings, it's important that if we're scheduling meetings with Directors or Managers, that the City Manager needs to be, you know, leading that effort. And if, if a meeting needs to be called, I need to be consulted and approved at any time. You can't just go ahead and hold a meeting. The, with regard to some other things that were, as far as, there was some kind of a strange situation with the union. She had scheduled union meetings with fire department and with the police and then did not attend them or say anything in advance about them. There's, there's a lot of concern there because every other place that, and every other HR Director had been, you know, basically they're required to be at these meetings and they need to give, if they can't make it, we normally reschedule meetings. The, there was like 10 requests outstanding that weren't completed by a deadline I set for, for public information requests with the HR Department. The, there, there's a number of other things there, but you know, it's not, it's not all. And I try to, this was a probationary employee. I, I tried to, you know, make sure that, put the minimum out there when I, when I have to terminate somebody because I want to try to preserve their reputation. There's, as far as means with the county, the county has had a lot of very successful meetings with us as far as going forward with agreements. We did the Warner Truck Enterprise Agreement. The act was going to fall apart until I salvaged it and the city's contributed 600,000 towards the looping of utilities there. We were able to do about 400 acres of annexation and, you know, expansion. We also did a radio agreement with the county that saved us about a couple million dollars. And I've worked really well with the, with some of the head county administration and some of their county elected officials and trying to promote issues where it was a mutual advantage to both the city and the, and the county. On the Blanche, the situation there was that it was concerned that if you went ahead and, and you could go ahead and sue them, but it may wind up like in one of our other lawsuits where we won the lawsuit, but it cost the city, you know, over $700,000. The, with the Blanche, the safest way to go about and gain some funds was to come up with a negotiated amount to reduce some of the payments the city was going to make. Relative staff, I would say that it's, we're working on getting a roll up. We just had a recent awards meeting and that seemed to go off very well. We're trying to do more with the staff and after COVID, it's been kind of a challenge because we weren't able, we had to go for a full year without having a lot of the activities we normally have. We held cultural bias training with the staff. We're, we're looking at providing a lot more support and training for, for our staff to help them be able to maximize their effectiveness on the job. The, the IT Director just wanted to go back to, it was interim IT Director, wanted to go back to the systems analyst position which he was initially hired for and he just didn't want to be in the, in the Director role. So we are presently seeking to fill that position, but the system analyst is really, it's a very, it's a technical position and he really excels in it. We have, he's probably the highest technical level we've had in a long time here. As far as refusing to use emails, I, I've, you gotta use emails. That's the way, the way of the world. But I basically, probably if it's a sensitive issue, you minimize the use of it. Like say if you're dealing with personnel or other things like that, you definitely will need to make sure you protect confidentiality. So those are some of the things I just wanted to address.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment to you? So on June 7th, I met with Mr. Helfenberger before the normal meeting. We discussed and laid out an agenda for a utility meeting to be scheduled on Wednesday the 23rd, which is this week. Last week, I had heard from some people at the county about the meeting. I called Ms. Sykes and asked for the agenda I hadn't seen yet, and Ms. Helfenberger had never communicated at all that there was even a meeting. Had I not called, we would have not been able to notice the meeting and not have it. This is a recurring issue with the employees. The morale sucks because he changes his mind from time to time. We have multiple times where there is a agenda or not a memo written. Employee against Mr. Helfenberger to sign it going off in this direction. Another employee doesn't like it and we get a memo coming back in this direction and this will go back and forth. And I think if we talked about Mr. Boatwright, my conversation with him didn't go any way that it was just relayed right here. And, and I don't want to get into that because that was a personal conversation, but that's not how it went. He didn't step down for that. As a matter of fact, when he stepped down, he refused to talk to Mr. Helfenberger and that's why we got the resignation. We have a lot of issues. We have to start working on repairing them and fixing them. This issue's getting bigger and bigger and bigger and, and it's, it's getting to a point where the detriment, if we don't move forward, it is going to be very difficult to recover from.
Mr. Mayor? My concern is, and lots of this information that was revealed to council today has been, well, some of it is my first time hearing it. I have, I knew that there were some issues internal and that they needed to be erected and they needed to be attacked. I looked at the City Manager as for leadership and for issues internally. And if there are some things that council need to know about, I look to the City Manager to bring those things to council attention so that they can be appropriately addressed. But during my personal conversation and investigation, that wasn't done to my satisfaction. And some of these things I've talked to the City Manager about, some of the things that I saw as problems or as issues, but it seems as though there are lots more that, more that I was not privileged to and wasn't aware of. Otherwise, I would have addressed some of those with the City Manager as well. But we do have some issues here. And again, I look to the City Manager for leadership and control in managing, you know, the internal affairs of the city and with the employees. And that was not done and had not been done, you know, to my satisfaction.
Okay. You know, this is not a small organization. It's very big, it's very complex. And the, we've talked about getting evaluations. We haven't done it. Maybe Ms. Helfenberger guided us to do it. We haven't done it. We need to do it. We need to evaluate everything that's going on. We need to evaluate Mr. Helfenberger and every part of the city. To do a knee-jerk reaction from last week to this week just to remove somebody with no backup plan that I know of, then we're gonna just be floating with no guidance. I think we need to ask Mr. Helfenberger for assurances that he'll move forward and do the right thing, do an evaluation. To do an evaluation, we need to see that there's progress made and it should be made in the next few months, but we should get a plan and do it the right way. And if it doesn't work out, then we can move forward in an organized way. To do it today like this, I have no idea where we'll be tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Sure.
I could take an empty chair and be in a better space tomorrow. So, and this is not a knee-jerk reaction. This is something that, in my opinion, has needed to be done from since before I was even elected. And it's not a new thing to hear from the county. We're a laughing stock and it's ridiculous. It's time for us to take a stand, do what's right, and move forward. Now, we talked about having an evaluation. Mr. Green brought it up in February or March, March? And here we are in almost July and it's gone nowhere. When, when Mr. Helfenberger signed his contract, it said he would be evaluated annually. I wasn't here on that council, but we missed some opportunities, at least two, that we should have had an evaluation. They didn't happen. Within 90 days of his contract being signed, he was supposed to submit to the council. The council approved a form for evaluation. That's not been done. So we could keep going down the road of getting information and not getting it? I would just like to know what happened to Mandy Rand. How about the report we asked for? How about the Neil Decker on the meeting last, on the 7th, when I asked for her to be on this meeting tonight at the 21st, called me last week to say, I'm prepared to come to the meeting and talk, and she's not even on the agenda? And we were directed at a meeting to put her on the agenda. The will of what we want to do to drive the vision, the city council drives a vision, but without the manager being the executive in charge and making things happen, we're in a horrible situation. And we definitely have candidates that we can do. From looking at the, the email that Donna Duncan wrote about Amy Fields, I could see her being interim City Manager. I mean, she's got a master's degree and to hear, to hear Donna Duncan and when you've got the police chief and you've got Mr. Dial, you're talking three of the core employees of the city that are backing and trying to get Mr. Helfenberger to change his mind on this termination. To me, maybe you should look at a resume. And I looked at an HR file and I didn't see any documentation of negative things, but maybe that's just how we do business in the city. So one thing I think we need to do is focus on what we can do to move forward. The evaluation process, that's fine. We'll get to the same point. Why drag it out so we go farther down the hill?
If there's no other comments, your counsel, your motion has been accepted. It's time to be Colorado.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
No.
Mayor Whit?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we install Amy Fields as interim City Manager and that we go with Range Riders as a backup to help us out. And in addition, that we open up a full search for a future City Manager to lead us in the right direction.
She has the credentials.
I have her resume here.
She's been at the four-year college and 10 years in Princeton District Corporate Management. I don't know.
Yes, she actually, she actually has an MBA. She has well over the 10 years corporate time necessary. She has plenty of background. She has a military background, which I noticed was redacted in the file, but if you read down through it, you can see it. So she had military as well. So I think if we look, you know, at what's available, and, and part of the reason I came to this conclusion was what Donna said in her email. Amy Fields has been a breath of fresh air for the city of Lake City for many reasons. She's highly qualified as HR Director in that she has the skills and knowledge to know and understand the duties of the position and how to perform them. I've come to know Amy is not only a very competent Director, but she has many skills and traits that are required for this position that she pulls off effortlessly. She has the highest ethical standards and utmost integrity. And it goes on and on. And then to not only have that, to have the chief and Mr. Dial also, I think this is something that we can hold our hand to. Let's not have a vacuum. Let's, let's start moving forward as we look for someone.
Okay, that's the motion.
That's the motion that I'll second.
I'd rather have the Range Riders come in and have somebody that's neutral and don't have a problem with the city and look at things until we can do an evaluation and get applications and do it.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Range Riders plays a role regardless. Now, Range Riders, I've, I've talked to them. I've called and talked to their Director and they don't make decisions. What they would do is bring it back to us as a council. I'm also gonna propose, in addition to this, whichever way we go, that we're going to need to have an expanded meeting schedule. I, I think we're gonna need to meet more often because whoever's in that position, whether it be interim, whether it be Range Riders, whatever we do, we're gonna have to keep our finger on the pulse a lot more until we have a full-time person in place. And so I think probably starting in August, we should probably meet, I would think, almost weekly until this is solved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to get a feel from, I, I know what the recommendation is, but, and I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but I would like to, since that is a motion and a recommendation from Ms. Fields as to how she feels about that, would she, if that was the offer, will, is that something that you, you feel capable of doing and that you would like to do? Because I don't want us to push something off on someone that does not, that's not what they want.
I certainly will.
Mr. Mayor, would it be okay if I asked Ms. Fields a question? Ms. Fields, looking at your resume and with your background, do you feel that you could run the city on an interim basis and keep it together or maybe even build morale?
Certainly will try. Yes, sir.
My house.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
No.
Mayor Whit?
No.
Okay. Now that we've finished that, I know some people, Mr. Biden mentioned that people didn't want to sit through a lot more meetings, so everybody would like to have a couple of minutes to exit and then we'll get on with the CPA. So, everybody would like to have a couple of minutes to exit and then we'll get on with the CPA. As I understand it, the CPA had to leave. That will come out later. The resolutions. Okay, we have City Council Resolution 2021-089.
A resolution of City Council of City of Lake City, Florida, accepting a bid from Slack Construction Incorporated related to the purchase and installation of a prefabricated metal building on an existing concrete foundation, providing for a contract price not to exceed $84,173 and zero cents, providing for the execution of the contract and providing any type of date period.
Motion of City Council Resolution 2021-079.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of a resolution of the 2020-079.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is the building we brought previously to. And I think understanding where it's going now, you can definitely see why it's needed.
Right. All right. Anything else? Would you like to call it off?
Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. And to do business, there's no order says we have City Council Resolution 2021-089. Mr. Governor, I'm going to do that by now.
A resolution of City Council of City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of task assignment number seven to the continuing contract with Jones, Edmonds and Associates Incorporated for professional consulting services that amends the scope of work related to the construction of modifications that reclaim water production facilities at the Sisters Welcome Road wastewater facility, providing for a not-to-exceed contract price of $59,878 and zero cents and providing for an effective date period.
Is there a motion of City Council Resolution 2021-089?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 2021-089.
Second.
Do what now? What do you have? Now, officially, she's certainly went to the front or whatever. I'm tired of that.
Your honor, I asked her, I think, just waving to stay and then we could reconsider that action. I don't, we can reconsider it anytime or after this, after Mr. Young goes through his administrative proceedings. But we will need an effective date for interim contract.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you have a motion? We have a motion, I'm going to clear it second.
We do not.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? It's actually Colorado.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yeah.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
Next, City Council Resolution 2021-091. Mr. Governor, I'm going to do that by now.
A resolution of City Council of City of Lake City, Florida, ratifying the mayor's extension of state of emergency rising from a COVID-19 public health emergency period.
Is there a motion of City Council Resolution 2021-091?
I move for approval of a resolution of the 2021-091. Second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion? It's actually Colorado.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
It's actually City Council Resolution 2021-095. Governor, I'm going to do that by now.
A resolution of City Council of City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding with the Institute for Justice Research and Development at Port State University and Merida in Behavioral Health to research methods to reduce repeated interactions between law enforcement and individuals who have severe mental health and substance abuse disorders and to identify ways to optimize the use of crisis stabilization units and post-discharge support period.
Is there a motion of City Council Resolution 2021-095?
Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption of City Council Resolution Number 2021-095.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. It's actually Colorado.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. The Department of Administration, Discussion, and Special Action, demanding the code of ordinance and land development regulations for the lives of chickens within the city limits.
This report to council is being brought to you, Dave Young, Lake City Growth Management, for your review and for your direction as a city council on, this is the draft that I came up with after consulting and looking at other cities within the state. And this is basically how they're doing it. And I was giving y'all this direction on if I'm going the right way or do I need to look a different direction?
Anybody got any comments about it?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. So, what kind of leasing income will that bring in? I didn't see anything in there. Is there like a cost per space where you're leasing a space or you're just letting them put the machines there?
Chickens.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the next one mentally. Sorry about that. Chickens are good. I didn't see the same form. I like the chickens.
How many cities usually have that?
How much lately?
Right now, there is almost 80 cities in the state that have it and approximately 47 counties.
But they can't have roosters, right?
No, no roosters.
And these, remember?
Yeah.
These chickens has to be pinned up.
The chickens what, sir?
They have to be in a pen, pinned up.
Yes, sir. They have to be a coop. The coop has to be a minimum of certain square footage and not over six foot tall. Has to have a run there for them. They can be turned loose as long as the owner or the owner's rep is there to control them. But they cannot be left to be run loose anytime during the day or night. It's not supervised. Do what, Mayor?
Have you heard of a downside, a lot of complaints about it or?
Not, not with no roosters. But there is a lot of code enforcement in certain areas about the smell. That people are not keeping their coops clean, which is in here. They have to be kept clean and the smell has to be at a minimum.
I heard a rooster might do it.
It was in your yard. Mr. Mayor, if I may, how did we come up with four? What was the determining?
That's been the norm throughout all of the cities and counties that I've talked to that have these ordinances. Anywhere from four to six. They're going four to six, produce enough eggs for a family, more than enough eggs for a family to use themselves.
I've had people in there saying they wanted it. I've never had anybody negative or say, I don't see why we don't.
Well, my concern is, if we allow the chickens to come in the city, why not, what if somebody would bring some hogs in the city, a cow?
Well, that's, that would be a ordinance that would have to be looked at. Just like we're looking at the chicken ordinance. I mean, if somebody, a citizen makes a suggestion to the city council or even to growth management that they would like to see something, we look into it to see, you know, what our ordinance specify now. What would be needed to change that ordinance? What is the majority of the other cities in the state doing? And that's what we research and try to find out so we can bring it before you all.
Again, my, another concern is, is the smell. I'm quite sure everybody has smelled the chicken bone. And that's not a good smell.
No, sir, it's not. That's why it's, the ones that I've seen and talked with on the cities, they said that they, some areas or some cities have code enforcement issues with the smell, people not taking care of it. Now, the thing about it is, the way it's written and we took it from the other cities is if there's code action brought and it's found that person, it's a permit that we issue them to eat the chicken. They lose the permit and the chickens have to be removed. But we still retain some kind of control on it.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Generally, obviously, I do not, obviously, based on historical review. But I did have a citizen ask me before the meeting if the chickens would be required to be fenced in. And what I understand, having read the ordinance a little more and the benefit of Mr. Young's presentation, there would be a coop confined to a backyard, which the backyard must be fenced by at least a six-foot tall fence, correct?
Correct, yes.
But what you're saying is that they can be let out of that backyard if they're under, for rental supervision.
I guess, yes. That was, I took from some of the other cities and said, they have to go back and put that back in. People were letting chickens out and out of the back of. Mayor, they're running free and as most of y'all know, chickens do fly. So, a six-foot fence is no deterrent for them to go over.
So, Mayor, I just wanted to have, to express that for the benefit of the citizen that asked me. And I didn't realize that there was a supervision component to it. So, first chicken ordinance, I've run into it 18 years. But I wanted to make sure the ultimate decision, the attorney was not misleading the citizen. Thank you.
When you, Mayor, one question for clarification. When you say that they could be let out of that coop under supervision into, I'm assuming, well, are you saying they can be let out of that coop into the six-foot yard?
Yes, sir, into the six-foot yard only. But unless you flip their wings, they're not flying. If they want to go over the fence, they're going to go over them.
Mayor, do point out, Mr. Young, under section D, as in David 1, on page 227, it says that chickens be housed at all times within the coop or fence pin area, except that they may be removed from the coop or fence pin area by a resident or visitor of the home, provided they have the continuous custody and control while they are outside the coop or fence pin area. So, maybe, maybe they go into the front yard was the question that I was trying to use for explanation to the citizens.
Uh, no, sir. Okay.
I would, yeah, I was, right. My lady used to come here and mention that.
We could even write this up as a trial over.
Right.
I've had some cities tell me that they did trial overings on it with a certain number of permits. There's a lot of be issued for the first year of the seat.
I don't have that idea. And tell people that is a trial program and they may not be able to keep them if we decide it's not. I still don't know that. What else? This is my lady speaking to the audience on that. Hope you all make a vote. Well, we've finished public comment, but I've got somebody here if you could speak real quick. Yeah, what about the chickens? Come up to the panel real quick.
My name is Ben Johnson. 721 Northeast Center. There's a problem with chickens already. They say they don't grow them when they're watching. There's a lot of people over in present town that's complaining about chickens. And they say they don't have no way to catch the chickens. So, I hope y'all think about other people with those chickens before y'all pass along, they can raise chickens. And I think someone had mentioned he was trying to get some, some kind of cage where you can catch the chickens.
Right.
I hope you all consider other people that are in the morning going to raise chickens. Everybody knows on raise.
All right, thank you. All right. I'm seeing where the big man from council said, I guess we just let that. Mr. Bass, when did you want to speak?
Well, I think it was the governor's first. Well, I was concerned about the chicken once they come out the coop into the fence backyard. What type of fence would that be? I understand a foreign raised, they're going to have chickens there. But they get flat. But would it be a fence that's getting the chickens performing? And you can have some fence that can get right through. You know, what kind of fence it is?
Right.
And my other question, I know that a single citizen can make a difference. Control orders coming in being. But I would think that unless there's more than one citizen got an interest in chickens, then, you know, I'm not sure we should spend time and one and a half, one and a half years. If they were a serious issue or a serious desire to have chickens or they can grow up or raise their own egg. I certainly know people who have that. Just to come up with an order, if there's only one citizen, I think that if there's an interest in that council, she's already, they can move forward. It could be a waste of the city's turn of time and not a strong support for chickens. I share with the gentleman, I live in present town. I'm aware of chickens. I went over to my daughter's house one day and I saw a chicken. I went to her daughter's. A principal, a car garage. The chicken was there. So, when y'all, when y'all got chickens? They come across the street. Well, you know, I don't like that. You know, you don't know whether they've got the seeds or whatever. And so, I think once we run this road around, people have four. You could go to the neighborhood and two or three out in the streets, then that's Miss Jones' chicken. That's, you know, then you'd never know. I think this deserves some serious consideration before we run this road.
Well, I didn't hear a lot of support for it, so I guess we just let. We won't. So, let's see, the next item is vending machines and automated teller machines on city-owned property.
Yes, sir. We've been approached by an individual requesting a business faculty for business license on this being able to place automatic teller machines on city-owned properties to take you to like City Airport, veteran walkway, anybody involved. I talked to procurement on it and Karen and I both agreed that this would probably need to go through the procurement process. But I wanted to make sure and run it as y'all, so y'all are in agreement with that. Feature put it out for bid to the highest bidder to rent the space that it's going from the city. And then plus, we need to figure out what kind of liability insurance the city would be to protect itself from anybody that gets hurt.
That was going to be my question. What kind of liability would the city have?
Well, if somebody's there and they pull the machine over on themselves.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question about that? So, I negotiated two leases for ATMs here in the city in the past for an. So I negotiated two leases for ATMs here in the city in the past for an institution. And they maintained the liability in the lease. Now, that institution's rather large and they had one stolen with tobacco in Jacksonville that was on, I believe, city property. But, but I think if we're going to entertain that, there's some money to be had in it. If we're willing to lease the space and it could be a convenience to people. There's no ATM downtown. There's nothing here.
Not at the airport.
Yeah, there's none at the airport. And if we're going to have a real airport, real airports have ATMs. So it might be something we should review and open up to bidding by banks as well as private individuals.
Are you talking about just ATM machines or coke machines or?
I think that's two different things, but I think it's a combination. I think, do we not have ATM machines? We don't have coke machines?
We have.
I'm seeing coke machines.
Sending machines.
Do we lease those spaces?
I do not know.
Yeah, they should be leased.
Yeah.
That's good, good revenue there that someone needs to pay for that spot.
That's the way, the reason I wrote it up is approving placement of vending machines and/or automatic teller machines.
I mean, I would recommend researching the fee part, but.
Mr. Mayor, I have a concern about it. I don't know where the individual businesses anticipate on placing these machines. But I would oppose to place them on our streets. Right. Because of the liability issue there. And then we have to be concerned about ADA compliance. We may have to modify the street. I don't know, but there's some unknowns there. If the business wanted to place it inside of their business, but then there's no permit required, they wants to do that.
That's the restraints. That's like the individual is putting on inside the blank. While they got written permission for the blank, we issue them a business tax receipt to be able to do that.
And so we don't set any liability for them.
But between the city-owned properties and this individual or any individual or company, you know, it should go out to bid. And the highest bidder get it, but then we need to come up with what restrictions to be placed on it, like liability insurance to hold then to hold the city where we're not liable. If somebody comes along and steals the machine.
Yeah. Well, I can possibly understand placing one ATM machine, if you like, inside City Hall or the airport, what have you. But I have a concern that I said, we're going to place something on our streets on the outside because of the liability.
Yes, sir. We do have ordinances and also codes for anything that goes on the sidewalk where it cannot block the use of pedestrians and vehicles. You know, it has to be ADA accessible. They would all have to be ADA accessible no matter where they're put. But this, you know, to go on a city street, they can't just put them on a sidewalk because now you're narrowing down that sidewalk. If it goes less than six foot, then we're not meeting ADA. So there are a lot of restrictions that they will, that they would have to meet if they wanted to put one on on the sidewalk.
Does, you know, like at airport or downstairs here? Is there a demand for that? I mean, do we have people that?
All our coke machines in positive use down there.
Yeah. I guess, you know, if we find certain areas that we think would be a need, like airport or downstairs here, a few places, they put it out for bid. Volunteers of America request for the city to donate properties.
Volunteers of America, I think y'all got the packets. They are asking for the city to donate the almost five acres, four point seven, eight acres, this just north of the old football field stadium. They would like to do affordable housing onto there. I've got one suggestion that I put down that the city be listed for sale to the highest bidder on GovDial or GovDeal and the proceeds utilized for repair of homes or low-income persons. Need to make sure the city doesn't have any plans for that. I have not found anybody that can tell me they have any future plans for that property by the city.
Is that what we just did the?
Yeah. That's where the blokes usually stage for the Christmas parade and like that.
Mr. Mayor, I just talked to Mr. Henry recently about possibly getting us some electric wire there so we can have more events in that area. That, that area to me will always be the baseball field, but I want to see it used for the city, but I think a recreational purpose. Now, we definitely need affordable housing, but as far as that location, I don't see that. But we do have other items coming up for bid, right?
Yes, sir. There, I believe Karen's trying to get them onto GovDeal now, but we do have to put a minimum bid, even if it's only a dollar in order for getting it on to GovDeal. We just found that out. This is the first time we're doing land property on GovDeals, so we're learning.
It's an interesting process.
Yes, sir.
I gotta send you that. That completes our bid, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor.
Yes.
You didn't call me. I have requested to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
The fiscal constant six, seven, eight, York West, Allen Avenue. I just wanted to address something that Commissioner Samson, we spoke about at the last meeting, about the jobs that were going to be coming to help people in the low and moderate income community. I'd like to know what jobs are these companies going to be having and what skills are needed? So the people that are looking to apply for these jobs is going to be coming up. So if they don't have the skills that we can see about getting them trained and developed for those skills. So when that time comes, we don't, you know, we won't have to worry about anyone saying, oh, we have these jobs, but they weren't qualified. So if you could probably find out who and what, you know, who's responsible for implementing these jobs, what they're going to be, I will send you an email where you can get that information for me or my counselor. And then I will work with the people that I know that's looking for jobs to see if they have the skills so people get them trained.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond to that?
Yeah.
So HECO's in the process of doing that and they're going to be setting up some of the training. However, there's a lot of other programs as well. If you would, I've got a card by there, email me and we can get together. But because there's some other job training opportunities as well. But yeah, so for that, those jobs, both the county grant and the city grant with the percentage that has to be the, the LMI that qualifies, it's going to be roughly eighty jobs between the two is what I understand. So in addition to that, the county has been working on, and we were supposed to be involved in this process. Another thing, who knows where the heck it went. They wanted to approach us. We have some property over there that HECO wanted to see about utilizing to build a training facility just outside of the airport because you can't build it within the fence. And, and I don't know where that went. That was one of the things that's just left on the table, but that's one, another thing we're looking at because they have the idea that they would need to train several hundred people. Because if this works right, if, now, it's always an if with contracts with government, I know that's one thing. But if it works right, they're going to need a lot more than they can train in their current situation. And that's what I'm hoping for, for the city to move forward.
Okay, just want to make sure that we can get people prepared so that they can be able to qualify. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes. Ma'am, we just opened Burger King right over here and they are hiring and in the process of hiring fifty-five people. So Mr. Jefferson was over there at the grand opening with myself and they announced that they are hiring fifty-five people.
Okay.
Local people, so.
Thank you.
I understand, I see being back, so we can finish that up. If you want to come forward.
Thank you, good evening. Zach Shallow for a partner, James Moore in conference. Yes, we are playing musical audit presentations. And they was able to get the late butler about two minutes early, get back, so it didn't all work nowhere together, so.
We appreciate you working with us.
Absolutely. So we are here to discuss the annual audit for the September thirtieth, twenty twenty fiscal year. I would like to thank, of course, the city for the opportunity to continue working on with you all. This is our third year performing the city's external audit. Big thank you as well to Dawn and her team in the finance department for all their help through this process. There is a PowerPoint presentation that I did instead of bound copies of the financial statements. And we do have that here as well, though really as in prior years, you know, be the highlights of my comments. We'll hit on it from a very high level without drilling through it from cover to cover, back and forth, three different pages. So first and foremost, these are management's financial statements. And there are five reports that we issue as a result of performing the audit that reflect really the results of the procedures that we perform. The first report. The first report is the actual audit report on the financial statements themselves. We did issue here an unmodified opinion. So this report is, this will even see in any audit environment, whether you're a government, nonprofit, privately held company, public company, they all have the same foundation in terms of the standards that are followed. An unmodified opinion is the best opinion that we can issue and states that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, effectively that the numbers can be relied upon. So I think that's the best opinion that we could issue and what you would want to see here. The second report that we issue is a, what's called a single audit report. And every year, the city spends more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal or state grant fund. And we have to look at each bucket independently and then see whenever both these federal and state threshold this year. And then we effectively have to perform a many compliance audit over your major grant program. So usually every year we've had a couple of your airport grants. We had no issues on that front before we led to those grants this year. The third report that we issue is on internal control and compliance. We are required to follow what's called government audit standards. And that requires us to issue this report where we have to, number one, you know, look at the internal controls in place related to your key financial processes like payroll, accounts payable, utility billing, and assess if there's proper controls in place. And then in performing the audit, we perform various testing over the functioning of those controls and also in other areas. If we come across any deficiencies in internal control as part of the audit procedures, we would have to report those here, even though the audit is not focused on internal control, we're not expressing opinion on internal control. We've had one comment this year related to information technology controls. We've had a similar comment in prior years. The comment prior years is really more so just difficulties even performing the required assessment. There are some areas that we are required to look at with regards to your IT controls, more so on the application side and who has access to do what in the financial system, not so much, you know, the network side. Past years, we had issues just performing those, getting what we needed. This year, we did perform our complete assessment and we had some areas for improvement. Those are outlined in a separate letter. Basically, what the way this works is if we have specific comments where there could be any threat, so to speak, to the network security or otherwise, as a result of those, there is a public records exemption because basically you don't want that necessarily out in public view. So we do have a separate letter giving the staff just detailing those recommendations. Both are just tightening up policies, nothing, you know, from a very high-level critical standpoint. We did have some recommendations on that front as a result of that part of the audit that we took a very brief look at those IT controls in place. The fourth report that we issue is a management letter required by the floor of the other general. Kind of a catch-all here, most of it focuses on financial condition. We do have to look at the city's financial condition relative to other cities. And if there were any negative trends or benchmarks, we would have to report this as we'll get to the city's in a very strong financial position. There's also a catch-all for any other comments, observations, recommendations as a result of the audit procedures. We did have one comment here related to utility billing. When the CPI adjustment went into effect during fiscal year twenty twenty, there was, I believe, one account type where there was a small discrepancy in rate to be charged. It was overall pretty minor effect. It was about, I think, nine thousand dollars, actually Uber billings initially that were then credited back to the customer. So the recommendation there was there was no large dollar impact, but that's just a critical review process to have in place in terms of when any rates are changed and there are different systems that those are being tested, you know, regularly as soon as that's done, when the bills go out. Because the worst case, we don't want to have happen this major underbilling situation that goes on for a period of time. So that was our one other comment or recommendation that we had to report. And then finally, we do have to issue a opinion on the city's compliance with state statutes over investment activity and investment policies. And then we did, and that report noted the city to be in compliance for the specified statutes. So with the numbers, we did a three-year trend look at your general funds, your fund balance, your assets minus liabilities. And what this is, it gets broken into different categories, which most of those are zeros. And the reason for that is the restricted dollars. Those are generally tracked in separate funds, so they really have better accountability and transparency over the use of those dollars. So that's why there's no restricted fund balance in the general fund. The only item pulled out is what's called non-spendable, which is based to any inventory of pre-pays where the accounting theory says, well, it's not in cash form, it's not going to, not going to turn your inventory into cash form, you're going to use it. So because you can't spend that on something else, that gets backed out as what's called non-spendable. So that on the side of the balance that really represents, you know, fourteen million dollars is your overall available unrestricted kind of no strings attached, so to speak, reserve in the general fund. So to look at that relative to what you spent in twenty twenty, so let's, you know, get a percentage, how many months reserves are there? This was one of the closest ones I've seen in terms of about six thousand dollars away from an even one hundred percent. Normally, there's always lots of fluctuation here. Kind of a couple of different factors where there was an increase from the prior year. You know, expenditures in some areas were down because a year ago, there was lots of uncertainty in terms of COVID nineteen and what would the financial impact be for some expenses to be scaled back? Because a year ago, we didn't know how much sales taxes would drop off, didn't know what property values will look like this year and so forth. So the good news is coming out of the pandemic, the city's in a stronger position probably as it's been a long time, if ever. Certainly in the three years that we've been working with. Two other highlights, as I mentioned, your other governmental funds, so your fire department, a lot of capital items, the CRA, those are all tracked in separate funds. There were no deficits in any of those balances in terms of a negative reserve in those other funds. And we do focus a lot of our testing on those restricted dollars to say, okay, have those been spent in accordance with the legal guidelines over how those funds can be used? And we had no issues to report on that one. We did also this year, there was a new requirement about two years ago, the state passed a revision to the CRA statutes that required a separate audit be issued. We've always audited the CRA as part of the city audit. Beginning this year, CRAs have to have a separate audit financial report that's published. It's a little bit shorter than the city's, about twenty, twenty-five pages. We did issue that with the same numbers as are presented in the CRA. There is an additional report there that says that the CRA expenditures and the use of the CRA funds were in accordance with CRA statutes, effectively a clean audit report as it relates to the CRA. And then also on the business-type funds, looking at your unrestricted net positions, a very similar measurement. We look at here really as just a trend to say, okay, are these moving in the, really the right direction, being a small increase year over year? Staying pretty flat. And looking at both the water and sewer natural gas fund, you've got some small steady increases, which is generally good to see. Like what's got inflation? Like, what has got inflation in terms of a percentage being pretty consistent year over year, so we seem to know the issues or items for concern, looking at trends in your two utility funds. Now, we would like to talk about pensions, the city does record what's called the net pension liability in your financial statements. You've got your three pension plans as well as the important retirement system. So what happens is, well, the ongoing obligation of the city is to make all of the annual required contributions based on what FRS tells you, and then what your re-plan actuary say needs to be contributed. All those contributions have been made, from a reported standpoint, governmental accounting standards require that the net pension liability or the unfunded liability be reported for presentation purposes. So you will see total liability about nine million dollars related to that net pension liability. The police plan was a net pension asset, actually, so that showed up as an asset on the balance sheet. But I just want to highlight that because while there is an eleven million dollar net pension liability, there will not be a need to kind of check for eleven million dollars. Again, the pension plan is all about the long-term funding and meeting those required contributions, which has come down. From an overall standpoint, looking at your three plans, though, as you can see there, the general police fire funded percentages, except for fire took a small decrease. All of those improved this year, you've got two in the ninety percent range, one, again, overfunded, so the pension help of the city's pension plans, again, is very strong. There's still cities out there that have plans that are sixty percent funded, you know, and they're happy to get to seventy percent. So from this standpoint as well, the city's in a very strong financial position. We'd like to always highlight that to give you context for the record of what that significant net pension liability is that shows up on the financial statements. So with that, that covers my comments, I'd be more than glad to answer any questions, and thank you again for the chance, Peter.
I got any questions? The report, uh, we need a motion to approve the audit.
Motion to approve the audit as published.
A second.
Second.
Hold on a minute, Paul. Good job, Ms. Dunne.
Thank you, my staff as well.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, glad it all worked out, wait.
Absolutely, thank you all, good night.
Okay. Right, Mr. Coverline?
Talking to you soon, Andrew.
Ms. Fields stepped out, I think you can discuss among yourselves at least three items that you would want to discuss on any interim or full permanent manager. Number one, the effective date of their tenure, meaning the start date, the pay grade, if I can tell you what I can find immediately off of your personnel policy, you can only start at the lower end of the pay or wage plan. I do not know what that range is for the city manager position. I'm just giving you what is in your personnel policy at the moment. And then the third thing is whether or not you have any limitations on the expenditures. For example, currently, your procurement plan allows your manager to spend up to twenty thousand dollars on commodities or services without approval from the city council, anything over twenty thousand comes to the city council generally speaking. There may be other questions, I just don't have those, I did have a chance to review Mr. Health, skim through Mr. Health and Murray's current contract, I do not intend to, that the, you would enter into a full-blown contract, it would be an interim agreement. And so those three terms will be the keys that I can see at this moment. If you want to propose something to Ms. Fields and come to an agreement this evening, or if she needs more time, then we can bring this back at the next meeting, whenever that may be.
I should ask, thank you.
Mr. Coverline, on the effective date, now that the charter calls for a certain time for possible things that can happen if Mr. Helfenberger decides he wants to get a review, how does that affect us going forward?
Well, the, I'll go over the, the overview of the procedural timeline, that the, a copy of a preliminary resolution needs to be delivered to Mr. Helfenberger within three days. Mr. Helfenberger then has an initial five days to review that and let you, let the city or council know that he wishes to have the equivalent of a hearing, which would be a public meeting to discuss the reasons that are in the preliminary resolution. Tomorrow morning, I will go over the audio of this meeting and include the, the comments of the move you, Mr. Sampson, in the preliminary resolution, and then get it to the clerk's and mayor's offices. If Mr. Helfenberger requests a meeting or hearing, then within fifteen days of that request, we must have that meeting, and no later than thirty days. If Mr., and then a a decision, a final decision is made, one way or the other, by the council, that'll be a final resolution. If a request is not made by Mr. Helfenberger, then on the sixth day, then a final resolution may be put into place, which would call for termination. So that's the overview, Mr. Sampson, three days, within the three days, we have to get the first resolution to him, and he has five days to make a decision. Any specific questions based on that overview, Enrique?
I think that's more pertaining to the pursuit of the long-term position and how we pursue it, because obviously we can't advertise him before on a position that's still under the possibility of a review until, I guess, that sixth day at the earliest.
You certainly can move forward with procurement and solic- advertising solicitations and, and pull those back. It won't be the first time that a solicitation or procurement has been canceled. It's really a question whether you want to move in that direction at this moment, sooner than later.
As far as the other piece of it, I was thinking, I don't know where on the pay grade that falls compared to what Ms. Fields was making previously. I would think it's probably a little more, but I would be in support of just the entry-level pay grade like we talked about on the city manager, as long as, one thing, I don't want her to take a pay reduction to do so. And as far as like time to start, I think that's kind of, when would you be available to begin?
Whatever.
I, I would think the sooner, the better, the longer, there's no one there, we've now suspended Mr. Helfenberger, I think we need to move forward with someone in the chair. We have some very important meetings come up starting Wednesday, where the county's involved in our utility meeting. I, I would like to see us go ahead and move forward and make it effective as of, I would say, Tuesday, if possible. But I'm open to more input.
Tuesday is in the twenty-second, is it tomorrow?
Yeah.
No, we said the motion.
You're looking at me, I'm sorry, I was waiting for someone to mention that to Ms. Fields, to see if she, I think she's.
Tuesday, tomorrow is good.
Tomorrow's good.
Okay. Seven thirty AM, I suppose, when the city opens, you all need to come to an agreement, obviously, we won't have anything signed by that time. So if we agree on the record as to the, as the payer wage plan, Ms. Fields, I don't know if you were here or not, let me explain to them what the new policy states that the wage and pay plan generally starts at the lower end of whatever that range is, I have no idea what that range is, I do not have those exhibits. If you know what that is, maybe you can enlighten the council, and at worst-case scenario, you could agree to work somewhere on a wage plan, so long as it's not lower than what you left, if, based on what Mr. Sampson was saying a moment ago.
I agree with that.
Somewhere on the pay grade at where you left off that, is that?
Well, I would say the lower end of the.
Lower end if it has the.
Yeah, during the interim period now, you know, depending on how we go with the full-time city manager, I mean, you may apply for that, I'm not sure, maybe other people want to apply for that here too. Keep in mind, I think, the long-term, you know, we'd have to discuss that differently for what you do going forward, but I think while she's doing that job, she should at least get paid and compensated for doing that job.
Excuse me, Mayor, Amy, the city manager's position is not on the page plan, pay plan, correct? Yeah, so there's not a pay, there's not a low end on the pay plan, it's not in the pay plan, either is my position.
Thank you, I was wondering because they are, they are exempt positions to some degree, so that was a follow-up question, so we need a number.
Exactly.
Well, we did have a range when we brought Mr. Hefenberger in, I think. If I'm not mistaken, we did use a range there, high end and the low end, I have no idea what that was.
If you, if you'll give me a minute, council, if you're interested, I'll look for that, I think, is that two thousand eighteen?
To get the resolution.
I'm looking for the, for the RFP. I don't know that I'll have that. I'll certainly look here.
I don't know what the range is, but Mr. Helfenberger's salary is one twenty-nine.
I would say, in the interim, we're going to expect you to fill in that position. You're going to have to have a lot of interaction to carry forward, I mean, I would be okay with in the interim making her salary similar to what Mr. Helfenberger's was. Now, there's some idea, you know, he had different credentials, but, you know, she has a master's degree, so.
I don't have any documentation, I'll give you a guide on what the advertised range was.
You say you don't have that?
That's correct, I do not.
Do we have his, when we brought him in? I want to say we brought him in about a hundred, about, you know, you know, one twenty.
With, with? Yeah, that's the one, right?
One twenty when they brought, brought him over.
I think that would be a good starting point, I think this time it's going to be more expensive, the costs are going up in hiring people, for sure. Would that be agreeable, if we brought you in at the one twenty for the interim time while you're doing that, would that work?
My last question was, are there any limitations on the procurement of commodities or services? Are we going to keep it where it's at in the procurement menu?
I'd say if we're going to put her in that position, I mean, she's going to be in that position, I don't think we need to leave her where she's at.
I do think, though, as I mentioned earlier, that we may need to meet more often to cover things that, you know, she's not going to have had experience dealing with, plus, we need to make sure that we're given the proper guidance. So I, I think we're going to need to meet more often, until we, you know, solve this position long-term.
Before we go to Mr. Sampson's next subject, and I have a consensus for our record, Mayor, on the effective date would be seven thirty AM tomorrow, June twenty-second. The starting pay would be one hundred and twenty thousand dollars even, and the procurement, as a question I had there, you know, it'd be satisfied, no limitations. I'd like a consensus on the record, we don't have anything in writing for her to start at those, with those, so if we could have a vote.
A second.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
No.
Mayor Whit?
Yes, ma'am, since everyone, I didn't try to call, I wasn't on the agenda, my, I'm going to be, Mr. Sampson, making sense, counting the people more often, once a week, starting August. It's my observation that with Mrs. Fields taking the position, that that goes mean that there's issues on the agenda, that utilities and the utility director, gas-related, the director need to be in the room. So as questions come up, at least people doing the job will be to answer those questions. It would be unfair to put her in a position to ask her questions about utility issues, if she gets thrown on hold. So those employees should be asked or requested to be at the city council meeting, particularly when, of course, issues to be on the agenda. I noticed in our last meeting, issue came up and our had to do with the thing I had to tell the utilities, and Mr. Hefner couldn't, couldn't, he said, I don't know. He said, that should never be the case, in my view, if he don't know, that somebody on the staff should be articulated for this part. So I would encourage, Ms. Fields, get her on the directive, Mars kind of suggests to the department head that they be because of that meeting, when there are issues on the agenda, affect their department.
And, and thinking about that meeting, and I, I'm thinking that we're in July, already got vacation bring, but you know, maybe we need to start meeting more often sooner.
You referring to the full council meeting?
Yeah, I see where we need to meet.
More so than our. More so than our price a lot.
Well, we could go with what we've got and see how it works. I, I, you know.
I don't see the need to be, have a full council meeting. I mean, there's some special thing that we need to.
Then we could be open to more special meetings, that's the need.
We could be more, we have more, thank you, actually, but I don't feel the need to.
If we need a special meeting, just do it.
I just need to ask a question because typically, we have to, with the bank, we generally have to have a resolution, you know, that's on the bank account. So I know this is a little late for putting that out there right now, but I need to probably memorialize the fact that she is, you know, allowed to sign all the checks, because we're going to have to change the plate and all that kind of thing.
Well, if she's going to be in that position, I think she's going to need to be able to.
Right.
fulfill all duties.
Well, because we're going to, we run checks once a week, and so consequently, come about Thursday or Friday when we run those checks, and the customer's name is on those checks, and so I don't, you know, I don't think that's legal, right? I don't know.
I think that this can be resolved, Mayor and Council, by allowing the mayor to execute a resolution tomorrow to allow the check signing capacity for Ms. Fields, just like he has decided preliminary resolution within the next few days also. And so if you all will authorize him to sign that, there is a provision that the resolutions have to come before you in writing, but this is a special situation, and it was put on the agenda under the emergency reasons or circumstances.
Our motion to deny it.
Second.
Motion to second.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
No.
Mayor Whit?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for your calls, your texts, you know, outreach to myself and my family, for my son, he's doing. Yeah, I reached to myself and my family, my son, he's doing, doing good, he's responding. They took him off the breathing machine today, but they put him back on just to see could he breathe on his own. And he's recovering well. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for their phone calls. I'm going to call out a few people and forgive me if I, if I miss you. But Mr. Jefferson, he's, he's been faithful by calling me. City attorney made a trip to Gainesville to see me. I was so tired, I, I was asleep and I, I missed him. Audrey texted me, who else? The chief, I got, I got a text from the chief. Mr. Warren, he's been faithful by coming to see me. And again, I just can't thank you all enough for what you have done for myself and my family. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, and, and the mayor, and the mayor, I'm sorry. I say, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to miss somebody.
All right.
Mr. Johnny, how about that?